You're all set? I think maybe we should, should we turn our mics off when we're not speaking?
No, 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 there was, someone touched the.
Oh.
It was too loud, that's why.
Oh, okay. All right then, it being 7:03 on this Thursday, December 8th, 2022, I would like to call, to order the meeting of the Town of Wenham Planning Board. This meeting is being held in person and all members are present. We, the first item on the agenda is a public hearing, yea, on the Spring Hill Farms subdivision, which has submitted a petition, or petition has been submitted by Spring Hill Ventures for an amendment to a previously approved definitive subdivision decision for Spring Hill Farms located on the easterly side of Dodges Row, assessors map 39, lots 8, 11 through 27. And this is another round of the discussion we've been having for the last couple of meetings about street trees, the street tree provisions of the plan that was granted when, 2018 was it?
It was 2015.
2015.
Yeah, it was 2015.
So is there anyone here from Spring Hill Ventures? Do you expect anyone here?
I did expect the applicant to be here. I'm not sure why he's not here yet.
Do you have any presentation you want to make to us before we start hearing?
I don't, I mean, I can read the public hearing notice into record, just so we have that to open the hearing.
That'd be great.
Okay, the planning board of the Town of Wenham, Massachusetts will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December 8th, 2022, at 7:00 PM at the Town Hall, 138 Main Street, Wenham, Massachusetts. This hearing will be on the petition by Spring Hill Ventures LLC, 900 Cummings Street, I'm sorry, 900 Cummings Center, Suite 412 S, Beverly, Mass, 01915, for an amendment to a previously approved definitive subdivision decision for Spring Hill Farms located on the easterly side of Dodges Row, assessors map 39, lots 8, and 11 through 27. The applicant proposes to amend the original decision to allow for fewer than two street trees per lot as required by the certificate of decision on a definitive subdivision plan recorded at the Southern Essex Registry of Deeds Book 36028, page 235. Plans and accompanying documents could be reviewed on the town's website at wenhamma.gov or at the Land Use Office, and B Weeks, Chairman Wenham Planning Board, published in the Salem News Wednesday, November 23rd, and Wednesday, November 30th, 2022. Again, I thought the applicant would be here tonight.
You were copied on an email, which you might not have seen very recently, saying he has a family emergency.
Oh, I did not see that email.
I did see Wynne's note saying he had a death in the family and was not going to be able to be here.
Who said that? That was Wynne Mulry. Wynne couldn't make it, and Wynne did give his opinion. You have Wynne's comments, but I didn't see the email from the, was it from Jeff Kruger?
It was.
So Jeff Kruger must have sent me an email before I left tonight.
So I have a couple of questions before we start, and that is, there are fewer than two street trees per lot, is the same general number of street trees as would have been placed? Had there been two street trees per lot being shown on this?
No, there are fewer trees in all, here it is. He says, hi all, this is an email from Jeff Kruger, hi all, I have a family emergency that just came about, I will not be able to attend the meeting tonight, Jeff. Okay. So, I don't know how you want to handle this, do you want to move forward with it? Or do you want to?
I think we should.
Okay.
I mean, I feel like we have talked this issue.
Yeah.
A lot amongst ourselves, so.
So.
I don't know how the residents feel about that, I see that they're represented by this one.
I am one of the residents.
Are you here to speak on behalf of everyone, or?
No, no, this is.
Ah, okay.
But I think that we should move ahead. And we have all the information, right? We just submitted the proposed amendment.
I wonder, can we somehow or other make sure that you're on a microphone so that Catherine, when she goes to.
Here, can you use this one?
Do the minutes, we should pull the podium out and have you come up and give your name and speak from the podium, which is what we did in before times.
I know.
And that way Catherine, who's our recording secretary and cannot be here tonight, will be able to hear what you say and know who you are, which will be tough for her otherwise.
Do you want me to repeat what I said?
I do, I'd like you to give your name for the record and your address, and then tell us what you want to tell us.
Okay, yeah, Andrew Goodman.
And make sure that you're speaking into the mic and that the mic is on, thank you.
Testing, are we good?
Are you good? Yes, yes, we're good.
Andrew Goodman, To Angus Circle, AKA Lot 14, one of the residents in the development, and I was just saying that, in my view, you have all the information, the developer did submit the amendment, it's been noticed, I don't think there's anything lacking, and I would suggest you proceed, but that's just my view.
Ian, so I can go over this if you want. So the applicants have presented an amendment, they want to amend the language of the original decision, condition number nine, I believe. The condition number nine simply says that two street trees shall be provided per lot at the, at the, under the, the, I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought. The tree warden has the authority to decide, you know, where the trees go and what types. So they came up with a plan, the tree warden came up with a plan, and he showed two street trees per lot, he had different species, and then some of the residents became aware of that plan and decided that they had already done some landscaping on their property and they didn't, weren't quite in agreement with everything that the tree warden was recommending. That's what prompted this discussion. Then the developer and the residents have gotten together, they've submitted this request to amend the decision to allow for the street trees in the locations that they're showing here on this plan. What I would recommend is that you, well, the tree warden has looked at this, and his only changes to this is that he wanted to change a, he wanted to make sure the correct language was used for the species, and he had another tree that he wanted to change, which we have a notation of in here. What I would recommend is that you have the developer submit an actual landscaping plan that shows the location of the trees specifically on a plan and the species. That way, if you're in favor of this plan, which, I mean, it essentially does what, I feel it does what the original decision was trying to accomplish, and that is to provide shade trees on this otherwise rather barren area. And, but as long as we have a specific plan that's stamped by a registered landscape architect, I think you would be, we would be more comfortable with that, so that in the springtime, when they are planted, we know that what's being planted is correct.
So it appears that there are 27 trees shown here versus 32, and a couple of the lots don't have any, is that because those lots have already done a lot of landscaping?
I'm sorry, Ian, could you say that again?
Sure.
Yep.
When I look at the plan, it's in front of us.
Yep.
There are fewer trees than would have been put in otherwise, by like five, and one.
I think it was 34, wasn't it?
32 or 34?
Well, originally, there are 17 lots.
So 34.
So 34 trees.
And there are 27 trees shown, if we can trust these numbers, which looks like we can, and so that's seven fewer trees. And some lots have no trees at all, and I'm wondering if that's because those lots are already?
One of the lots, I know one of the lots on the corner of Angus and Spring Hill, those two lots, the one to, if you're looking at the one to your, to your right.
Lot 11 and lot 12 and lot.
Yeah, this lot right here. That, this lot had planted some trees here, right along here, but they're pear trees. Wynne isn't thrilled with those, but rather than require them to take them out and replace them, he was, he was okay with that.
Right, so there are some street trees.
There are trees there, yes.
Even though they're not shown here.
This area up here already has large growth trees up in this area, so we weren't concerned that there was a need here. This particular lot, and I think it's Mr. Goodman's lot, they have some drainage issues that they're concerned about, having the trees placed here. This is a smaller tree, I believe, that Wynne was comfortable with that different sized tree, and they did agree to a change in what you're showing here.
And we also have trees, already planted four trees right where this is, right there.
Yeah, so they have some trees on their own lot.
Does anyone else here want to speak to this? I see Dr. Tannenbrink.
I'm Dr. Tannenbrink, 96 Dodges Row. I live right on the reservoir, we've had amazing erosion problems, you know, during this whole thing. First, you know, this was a mixed forest essentially that was cut down, and then they cut the hill to level out the road, and the amount of sediment that's come into the reservoir has been unbelievable, so I think more trees is just the best thing to do. Luckily, the erosion is less now that people have planted their lawns. We're losing a lot of trees on Grover due to a beetle that's eating the pine trees. There's so much exposure to light and wind in this area, I think now is the time to plant trees.
Do you live across Dodge Street?
I live on Dodge's Road, right.
Across the street from the development?
From the entrance?
No, I'm around the corner, 96 is just before Grover Street, we're the first house in Wenham, we're in the Beverly-Wenham line.
On the same side as Grover?
On the opposite side.
Opposite side, okay.
I'm right on the, we're surrounded by the water board.
Thank you.
Is that Vicki West's old house?
This is Vicki West's old house.
Across the street.
This property is Vicki West's property?
No, that's Angus's.
Oh, well.
That was Ruth West's property.
Oh, Ruth, right, sorry. Mrs. West is how I knew her.
Right.
I know the younger Ruth.
Yeah.
So Ian, if I could, so I think if you do decide that you want to accept this plan, it's fine, but there is a couple of options that you have. Where they're not planting as many trees as they were originally supposed to, we may want to request a, some kind of a donation to the tree fund. Wenham does have a tree fund, where they, you know, we plant street trees in other areas, so I don't know if we want to consider that in lieu of putting in the amount of trees that there was supposed to.
I think that's a great idea, some sort of kind of mitigation for those seven trees that are not being planted.
Yeah, and then again, I really would request that you request a certified landscape plan, because looking at this plan, this is, we don't know exactly where these trees are going to be located, so at least a landscape architect could do that more accurately for us.
Which would also show where trees needed to be added and also where the existing trees are?
Yeah, they could show us where some of the existing lodge trees are.
And the existing, and the trees that people have already put in, and just mark those accordingly?
Yeah.
And have the developer do that?
Yep.
Can we touch this plan, like modify it, or is it done?
No, you don't, it's not done, no, not at all.
I mean.
So are we, are we opening discuss, what are we doing? Are we deliberating?
Well, there's no one else here to speak.
Okay.
So I think we are deliberating on what we have heard.
Sorry, David.
No, you did the right procedural move, so I understand, so I took a drive up there, which was great, and I think once you get up the hill, it looks nice, and I can see where the trees are going to come in, and it's going to achieve the vision of the continental street-lined tree, of tree-lined streets of sorts, but a couple points. Number one, I would throw out, the biggest concern I have is that if you're on Dodge's Road driving along the hillside, on the southern side of the entry, closer to North Beverly Side.
Want to show us?
I'll be blunt, I think he should put seven trees right in here. I think the developer should put in seven trees right here.
I think that there is, that is supposed to be a lot where affordable housing units will be constructed.
No, this, this, if a house is built here, it's going to be built right here, if there.
Isn't there already a house right here?
There's a house right over about here, David.
Further, even further down toward.
And then all back here is wetland, this is, there's a.
Sump, right?
The river runs through, and then there's.
But this is a hillside, this is elevation.
There's a detention basin here, huge detention basin.
Down here, I mean, I assume that this is the line, is there?
Yeah, no, that's the wetland, that's the buffer. What you, what you, what we're going to see happen here when they build the house back here is they're going to cut into all of this.
Where is the White Cape House that is?
It's down by the end, I think, and toward the.
Which house?
There's a.
There's an existing White Cape.
There's a White Cape, is that the Affordable Housing Unit, or is that something else?
That's one of them.
Okay.
And then there's supposed to be another one built by.
Okay.
Harbor Light, right?
No, Habitat for Humanity, they've given Habitat for Humanity this lot, right here, and the only place that can be developed is like back here, this little area here, without infringing on wetlands. So this whole thing is going to come down.
So I wouldn't.
When they build that driveway.
They're going to take out all that land, because that is an elevation, there is a slope there, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, they're going to, the only way they're going to get in there is to put a retaining wall for that driveway.
So.
So access is off of Spring Hill Farm Road?
Mm-hmm, yep. It's not an area that I would recommend planting anything at this point, until we know what's going to happen. It's going to be a while until they build anything, but.
I mean, how can we even accept this Spring Hill Farm Road if he hasn't even done that aspect of the project?
We have not decided on accepting this street, it hasn't been applied for acceptance, they haven't applied for it. That discussion will take place once they do.
I know, but we were here tonight, I believe, because the expectation is he's going to put in an application in January?
Yeah, we expect him to.
My heart goes out to the homeowners, but I feel like the developer is, needs to be held accountable by this board for what has happened to the community with respect to the rest of the public on Dodge's Row. And the leverage we have is the acceptance of the town, of the road by the town, and there is a lot from Dodge's Row that I would like to see happen here, in terms of aesthetically, the trees, figuring out what's happening with this affordable housing unit. There just seems like a lot of stuff that, I mean, maybe we're, I'm getting too far afield, we have to focus on this plan right now, but the concept of saying that we're going to relieve the developer of the burden of these seven additional trees, it just feels like one more concession by the town in a series of concessions that are being made, not the least of which is the Affordable Housing Unit.
So Dave, it seems like what's, we've got two, two ways to go. One is donating money to the tree fund, or if there actually is any space for trees up there, maybe put a tree or two up there.
Well, and what, what happens further beyond Tree 27, out here? In other words, how far out does this property go, could you put some here?
Does this help you, David? I just tried to pull up the.
I can pull up the.
This is the aerial view of that area, I don't know if that's something you could pull up to help us understand what David's talking about.
Ken, do you have a URL?
Um.
It's just the town.
You can just search for Spring Hill Farm Road in Google Maps, and you'll see it. And maybe David can point to the area, he got a better picture of it, this area here.
Right. Do you want to pass that to Margaret so she can see what the URL is? Peter, can you pass that to Margaret?
Yeah.
If you do a Google.
Are you on Google Map? I can do that, too.
Yeah, Google Map is clear.
You can see the street view.
Sure.
There you go.
And it's down, it's the junction of Dodges and Spring Hill Farm Road that you want.
It's right here, right?
It's right in the area, exactly right.
Yeah, let me zoom in a little bit.
Put here, by me.
Mm-hmm.
Just do this here.
Oh, you want to do street view?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yep, I'll grab them. Come on, little man.
The low-flying man. Right.
Yeah, so this, it's an older, slightly older view, but.
So I guess the point was, I think that the trees that are shown may not go all the way down to the little white cape, in other words, they're just at the entrance, but perhaps they could.
Well, his, so this is the affordable unit, and he's actually asked to take down a couple of trees on his property, but this is all his property here.
Mm-hmm.
So where, are you thinking like back in there, David?
Thinking between the line of his property and the entrance, and right now it appears that there's only like two trees right at the entrance.
Yeah, so it looks like what they're showing on the, the plan would be here.
Is that, that's on a driveway, is that, that's on a driveway, there's a mailbox there.
No, that's, that's where the water's supposed to go.
Yeah.
There's a swale back here that water runs down, this is the detention pond in here.
Yep.
Yeah, so the.
So the street trees are being shown at the location where the signs are.
Yeah, so they're showing them.
Yes.
There on that little corner.
And I guess I'm asking if there's anything to the right of those signs, where is there a location where more trees could go, is, could, could more trees be planted on the other side of the entrance, although there's a house there now.
The, oh, the other side?
Shown in this picture.
I'm not sure those would be shade trees for the subdivision.
No, they would not, but they would be shade trees for the people who live across the street.
And it would be covering up all of that man-made water retention from the street.
It would be an aesthetic improvement, which I think is the goal.
So this is a.
But where that digger is, it's going to be the access to the.
Mm-hmm.
I think we're talking about over here, correct?
Yeah, that's.
Is there any reason mechanically why they can't be put there?
That's my question. It sounds like there's maybe a swale there.
There is a swale here.
Or.
You see, it goes.
Sure. Ooh, the blurry thing is.
It goes down here, and that's where the water runs through.
When you say the water runs through, is it a culvert? What are we talking about?
No, it's, it's drainage, because.
It's like a cultech system or something, or?
No, it's just, just a little, a little swale where the, you know.
Right around the affordable house, and it ends up raining into Longham Basin.
Yeah, it goes behind you.
Where the erosion is coming from, likely.
And that's where the brown water comes from.
Yeah. I'm having a hard time visualizing another unit on that sloped property, David, I think I could.
You could, you could put some here, this is all part of Lot 17, this area back here is what will be cut down to access the land in the back.
Oh, Margaret, you see where it says Seymour Dates?
See, it says.
Up top, Seymour Dates.
Seymour Dates?
Yeah, is there anything more recent?
Let's see, that was 2019.
See latest date.
I think that's the latest one.
No, wait, could you go down to July 15, the earlier one?
That was 2015?
Yes, before, that's the before.
Yep.
That's what it used to look like.
That's what it used to look like.
So now we're. So there's no issue with trees growing in that space?
Not, not as it was, but they've reworked the land a lot.
Well, these trees are still essentially here, this, this one is the one they took down, actually, no, this is a little bit.
I don't think.
Here's the little white house.
Yeah, I, yeah. The issue is that the landscape topography has all been reworked, so can't really go with what used to be there, because it's all changed.
I mean, presumably, though, there is some type of landscape that could be tolerated by the current landscape architecture.
You mean, extra trees going in?
Or something, I mean, right now, something, I mean, right now, it's, again, I'm, I celebrate what I think will be very nice for the homeowners. Again, I celebrate what I think will be very nice for the homeowners. But for the rest of us, we are driving past something that looks terribly unfinished and doesn't seem like there's any plan to make it look any better. All that's gonna happen now is they're gonna cut into the hillside for an access to the affordable housing unit. So if we're gonna release these seven trees, is there anything that we could request from the developer as a trade-off, as an accommodation for what's going on on this hillside for the rest of us that are driving past this? And seeing that July 2015 photo is mildly heartbreaking.
Yep.
Yep.
So... So why don't we express our concerns? Specific concerns, different places, and say, "And oh, by the way, you're short seven trees."
Yeah.
And it doesn't all have to be trees. Someplace, there might be...
Shrubbery or something.
Shrubs. It could be laurel bushes or laurel shrubs, you know, which are very bird-positive and whatnot.
Can I get back to your first comment or question? Which was, do we have to accept this plan that's in front of us?
Yeah.
And no, we don't. This is just a proposal that's... So nobody's short seven trees yet. We haven't made that decision that
Right.
it's okay to be short in seven trees. This plan is short, seven trees. And so looking at this and not getting too far afield as to what we would, you know, think would be ideal for the conditions right now. But first thing is, I don't think we can put too much on when here to make all of these decisions. His... The scope of what he's supposed to do is pretty limited. It's just...
And I think he's done it.
Well, I think we're asking him to do more than what he actually needs to do, which is, he was just gonna decide whether the street trees or shade trees, whatever we're calling them, were either in the right-of-way or on the lots.
And they were the appropriate species.
And the appropriate species, right? And... But the amendment that's being sought is to remove the condition that there be two per lot. So we haven't delegated to win to say, "Put them wherever you want," and not two per lot, because that hasn't been amended yet. Second, I think you're absolutely right, Margaret, that we can't do this without a landscape plan that shows what's already there. Because one of my concerns, looking at this, if we could put the plan up?
Oh, yep.
You know, we talked last week about, and last month, about keeping with the spirit of the original decision. And there is a huge swath here with no trees. And it looks like it's the main component, like the middle of the subdivision.
Well, that's why I asked if... That's because people have already planted trees, which I think is what we heard from some of the applicants.
Mr. Goodman, so you've got trees on that Lot 14, right?
Yes, we have a lot of trees. I mean, we've planted like over 39 trees total on our yard. And so when you say, respectfully, when you say, "Short seven trees," I think actually net, you got a lot more trees. I mean, all of us have...
No, because there were hundreds and hundreds of trees on this property, so...
When you compare it to the 32 number, so I mean...
Thirty-four, and it's the developer's responsibility, not yours.
Yeah, understood.
So one of the reasons why I'd like to see a landscape plan is to see what's there, what you've planted.
What you guys have done.
Because you said...
You need credit for that.
Right, you said you're on Lot 14, right?
Yeah, I think we all agree.
Yeah, so we'd like to see, what do you have there? Because on this plan, there's no shade tree on your lot or on the next lot across the street from you, right? Which is Lot 11? Is that 11?
Yes.
This one, I mean, this is a little awkward for me, by the way.
That's where the pear trees. I know, I know you're not. And I'm not asking... We're not asking you to...
This is the one, like Margaret said, they've planted.
It's a pear tree.
Seven pear trees. So what this map doesn't show is... And there's trees already existing here. And what this map doesn't show are all the trees that are already there, right? And so what we did was, you know, this is the third meeting, right? And last meeting, you said...
Come back with a plan.
It was a proposal.
And a proposal, apply.
And a plan. And that's, you know, we worked with the developer who's not even...
And I think it's terrific. And I think that what you guys have come up with for this part may be the best we can do, but we'd like to have the developer submit an actual landscape plan that's certified by an architect that shows not just what he's putting on, but what you guys have already done, so that we can see what the street tree layout is. And if we can, at the same time, direct the developer and the landscape architect to come up with something that beautifies the entrance, additional street trees or landscaping or something.
Right, which I don't personally disagree with that at all. It's just, it's the first time that's, you know, that's coming up, but I don't disagree with that.
Well, we wanted the spirit of this was to try to bring back some of the...
Look, we're in favor of that. I mean, so... But my question, I guess, is, does that preclude you from, you know, approving amended to, you know, revise the language to fit more of the reality of the situation than it was when you approved the language in 2015?
When they approved the language in 2015.
Fair enough. When the former board approved the language in 2015, you know, you have proposed language in front of you today, I think. And, you know, does asking for another plan, you know, exclude you from approving that? So at least we have a pathway to get in this tree plan.
So I don't think that we could approve amendment language if it's not in conjunction with a landscape plan.
And we don't have amendment language in front of us, so...
That, too.
Well, respectfully, you do. It was publicly filed and noted.
Yeah, I sent you the...
Oh, it's not in this package?
I didn't print it, no. I had sent it to you in your packets.
All I got was the...
With the application.
The application.
No, there was a narrative asked that... I'll grab it. Let me pull it up.
Okay, so maybe we have language...
Right. The ask was, at the last meeting in November, the ask was, "Come back with a proposed amended language and a plan that matches it." And...
No, you guys have done your job. The homeowners have done their job. You guys were great. And the developer now needs to just come back with something that's formal, that can be, if we agree with the language, which it's not in front of us on this paper.
It's right here. This language isn't... You can't use this language. It doesn't work for what you need to do.
Well, this language, I mean, it doesn't...
This language speaks to something that's in the past.
Right.
And you can't do that. This language is saying, prior to the clearing of trees, that you're not going back and changing the past. You're amending something to indicate what's to happen in the future.
That, we... That's the existing language. That was not changed. So if we look at what the existing language, we didn't change that first two sentences.
And so it doesn't make sense to amend something to include past language. This will... It'll have to be recorded as a new, you know, as an amendment to the decision. So it would only make sense that it amends...
So in other words, the decision language will remain as it is, and then there'll be in another paragraph that says what the change is. That's what's gonna have to happen. And I think what we are asking for is for that to say that it will... That it will basically reference the plan, right? And that we would like to see the plan, not only as you've shown it, not you, but as they've shown it here, but also with the plantings that others have done and location of existing street trees, so that we're comfortable. And to make sure that the developer is doing what was... It is as... I think we said this before several times, that the intent of the original decision was to add a certain number of trees, mature trees, or eventually mature trees, shade trees, back where so much had been removed. And so if that's not possible at the entrance, in other words, it's not possible on the lots, we've had that conversation. If it's not possible at the entrance, they need to tell us what they're gonna do instead.
Okay, I mean, look, again, I don't speak for the developers. It's unfortunate he's not here tonight. But, you know, this, a lot of what you're saying is sort of new, right? At the last meeting, what you asked was, "Well, just revise the language that's in the condition, and show us, and submit it, and notice it for hearing, and give us the plan." So that's what we've done. You know, I feel like someone needs to tell the developer, like, your new sort of conditions or what you require.
I don't think it's new. I think we've said all along that we want the spirit of the original to be maintained.
Right, but this is the first time we're talking about like trees at the entrance, which I'm all for, but that's just a new topic that's come up tonight.
Because there's seven trees missing on this plan.
But we talked about the number of trees last time, too.
And we said we wanted this...
Would you like more trees at the entrance?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
And I don't think you should be arguing against yourselves.
Can we put the plan back up, Margaret?
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I... Well, no, look, I understand, but I think that my point is, like, we have a plan here, and I think the language works for the plan. You can approve the language and the plan, it also...
We can't approve the language for the reason that Margaret has said. We can't retroactively... We have to change it, but we can't approve the old language again, if you know what we're saying. It's just a technicality, but we really can't. So what we need is just a statement of what this plan is going to do in the future. And we'd like to hear from the developer, I think, that they would invest in the additional trees that they were originally intending and committed to put in to the development, in the front of the development at least, where that's possible.
So, Mr. Goodman, can I just express to you what my concern is, looking at this plan here? With... When Ann was talking about the spirit of the plan, and it was... That's really the two trees per lot spirit of the plan, right? So you've got, what, one, two, three, four, five lots before you get to the cul-de-sac on the bottom half of Spring Hill Farm Road? So in 60% of the roadway here, the span, there's only one tree that I see, maybe two with the number 20 there. So that just seems like it's a huge proportion of the roadway that doesn't have any of the shade trees on it. And I know that you're saying you've planted some on your own lot, which is what a landscape plan would show us, so we'd maybe be more comfortable with that. But I don't know what's on Lot 11 on Spring Hill Farm Road. I know there are some pear trees.
We don't know where.
And I think we don't know where. And I think we also talked last month about being less concerned about trees in the cul-de-sac area and Angus Circle, because it's heavily wooded down there, as opposed to other parts of the roadway. So my concern here is, you've got a huge... Well, it's not huge, but you've got a large area without any trees on the proposal.
At least as it's shown here. But this is why, if the developer did their due diligence and put together a landscape plan, got it stamped, that showed the existing and the new.
Right.
And then the language would need to read something like, you know, "To satisfy this condition, the developer has submitted blah-blah-blah plan showing XYZ."
Which is what I suggested at our last meeting, and then I was told, "No, we should do it this way." So this... I feel like my frustration is only in the fact that, you know, we've lost a lot of time.
Oh, I couldn't agree with you more. I wish you all had come in. Not you personally, but I wish the developer had done what needed to be done at the beginning and made an application for a change. That's really on them to do that and to work with you, and rather than having us negotiate this with you, because that's not the right approach to this.
So I don't think we can do anything without the developer or without the landscape plan?
Except direct him to come back in with what we're asking for.
What I was gonna propose was a motion to continue the public hearing.
Does he have to request that continuance? No?
You can continue it.
No, we can continue it, I think so is bonding.
Hey, I'll second that. Or did you make the motion?
I will. I don't know what our next date is.
To January...
These trees are not going to be planted till the spring in any event, so...
Nothing's gonna happen here till the spring.
And at this point, have the neighbors done what they needed to do?
I believe they have.
So I want to say that, because like you guys did a lot of work around and talking to each other and community involvement. And I really appreciate that, because I know, I see the frustration. I think, I want you to know, you did what you needed to do.
That's...
So the frustration is not with you and your neighbors.
And normally, Mr. Goodman, what happens is the developer would show up or the developer's representative and make the case for why what's being presented tonight meets the spirit of the condition, which is what we specifically requested as a body last meeting. And I don't think that happened. The developer didn't do that. And I understand he had a family emergency, and we all have family emergencies. We're gonna be accommodating on that. But that didn't happen. The case wasn't made tonight. It wasn't your job to do that. But once we approve it, the town's leverage is gone, anything, right? And so we can't do that until we have the case made to us why it's reasonable to accept something less than what we are entitled to and what was agreed in 2015. You didn't do anything wrong, and Rick's right on to affirm that. I appreciate your time for coming in.
And all your neighbor's time, because this isn't like no work. This is work.
Yeah.
And also, I believe that if the developer's done this before, he should know what the process is, right? So he should be ahead of us even to get this complete. So thank you for doing all your work.
Right, that's absolutely right.
So the next meeting will be January 12.
Okay, so I move that we continue the public hearing on the Spring Hill Farm subdivision until our next meeting, January 12 at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Can I have a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Provided that, at that point, the developer has produced the plans that are needed for us to continue discussing this.
So I will contact the developer and request a registered landscape architect plan showing the location of the proposed trees as well as the location of existing trees on the new subdivision.
And language that will accommodate the plan as an amendment to and not a replacement for the initial condition.
Should we put a deadline on that, on your amendment? That it's be submitted by a week in advance of our next hearing?
It's gotta be two weeks in advance, doesn't it? Because you have to notice. Do you... Do that have to...
I don't have to notice this, no. It's a public hearing, it's being continued.
How about a week ahead of time?
Okay, by...
January 5.
January 5. Which I realize is just after the holidays, but this is mostly done? This is really close to done.
I will do that.
Can I have a second on my friendly amendment?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman.
And really, you have done way more than you should have done on, had to do on this. Not that you shouldn't have done it, but that...
I appreciate that.
It's really not your responsibility. It's the developer's plan. It's the developer who had the condition. And it's the developer who needs to make the motion to amend and come in and do the work that needs to be done.
Understood.
So, and I appreciate everybody's time coming in to give us feedback.
See you next month.
I hope so. We won't know what to do when you're not here. All right, so the next items are administrative. The first one is discussion on the master plan progress. Margaret, do you have something for us on that?
We have good news. The meeting in a box is almost ready to go. We've gotten all the documents completed.
Do we have to close the public hearing?
We just continue it?
No, because it's continued until January.
So the meeting in a box is ready to go. And we should have those to distribute to the master plan committee next Tuesday, the 13th.
I want one of those.
Yeah, you gotta get one.[1734.81] Yeah, you gotta get one. It's act, it's gonna be an actual box. We got, we're getting clipboards and pens and little notepads to, to put in the box with, and the, the, there are documents that direct people on how to hold the meeting. We'll have invitation, um, samples for people to send out via email.
Red solo cups to offer? That might be inappropriate.
And a couple of recipes for cocktails.
I'm sure that's inappropriate, but anyway.
Yeah, so, um, that's, that's about it right now. The master plan, we feel, we, we hit a little bit of a bump. Things slowed down a little bit, but we're, we're moving forward really well with it.
Great.
They're being responsive. The consultants are very responsive, and Kate Mallory has actually started to help me with this, too.
Oh, good.
So, I have a little bit of help.
Good.
It's, um, it's, it's a lot of work. It's a little bit more than we anticipated, I think, but I think it's moving forward nicely. So, once those meetings in a box get out there, we'll start to get more input from the community.
Right.
And then, those aren't due back till the end of February.
And the idea is, what you do is you have all these materials, you invite your neighbors in, and you say, we're doing a master plan. We wanna understand what you wanna see. And you, there are some prompts, questions. It's basically a, a conversation.
Yeah, exactly, so.
And then the notes get submitted back to the consultants, as I understand it.
Yes, and they'll compile all of the, the notes and the thoughts and ideas that people send in.
Right.
So, Bob Moles, head of the climate, Hamilton Wenham Climate Action Team,
Yes.
would like to present and have a discussion with the planning board about the master plan.
Okay.
Can we just put him on?
Does he wanna come to the master plan committee?
Has he, has he already come to the master plan committee meeting?
No.
Yeah.
Nope. Do you want me to invite him?
Yeah. Um, I don't know about this week, but I think next, in the January, would probably be a good place for him to-
And when is that meeting? I don't know, like, the twenty-fourth or something?
Yeah, it's, it's a little, I think it's-
Which is after the planning board meeting.
Okay.
So, I would ask-
Yeah, it's the twenty-fifth of January. Do you want him to come before that, to the planning board?
Yeah, just discuss with, to the planning board.
Okay, and the topic in particular that he wants to discuss is how to be climate resilient, or?
Are we, is an, is a goal within the master plan, or are subparts of the master plan, um, going to help, uh, wanna become more sustainable?
Climate resilient.
Yeah, climate resilient, yeah.
I, I, I might feel that's much better for that group to work on first.
And then we would see it, yeah.
'Cause I think it has to bubble up, so we don't usurp the responsibilities of the chairman of that committee.
He's on, what committee is he on? I mean, what-
He's not on any committees.
He's, he's a climate-
The group, though, is the climate action group.
Yeah.
A task force.
Hamilton Wenham Climate Action Team.
Yeah, yeah. Um, they could probably do an interview with the consultant. I mean, we could have him do a-
Why don't, can you connect him with the consultant and with the committee? And then, if that doesn't work, if that's not satisfactory to him, then we can come, we can hear him. But, but otherwise, it feels like we're stepping into the shoes without giving the committee a chance to-
I'm fine. I'm fine. I'll just tell you, they, he started with Gary, um, Diane and I, that he wanted to present to the, to the select board. I'm like, no.
Him for the top?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. The over-the-top approach is not gonna work.
We're gonna suggest to him kindly that he might wanna take it directly to the committee, 'cause otherwise, we have to tell the committee what we heard, and it'd be better for him if he just did it directly.
I can talk to him. I did him a solid.
Tell him to take a look at the existing conditions plan that they prepared, because that topic is peppered throughout that document.
Yeah. He should probably look at it and then talk to the consultant. And see, you know, 'cause existing conditions is one thing, but what they're doing next is another.
But it's one of those bullet points that comes up in every section.
Yeah, definitely.
Makes me happy, but. All right, well, that's good to know. And then, the, the next topic is the MBTA Communities Update. You've sent us some material that I haven't looked at.
I did. I did. So, an article came out last week, and I, I got, a few people sent it to me. It was in The Globe.
Yeah, I read it.
So, there were a few communities in Massachusetts who are not in compliance with the MBTA.
They've sued, haven't they?
One community is suing. A couple of other communities just haven't done it. Hamilton is one of those communities.
Yes.
They just didn't do the first step in compliance, which was a simple form that had to be filled out and sent to the state that kept your community in compliance. Um, they just didn't, I think it just kind of got past them, which I'm surprised about, because we get emails on this constantly. And, you know, the states always sending us information, Mass Housing Partnership, um, so, Wenham, this article, what, what happened was, one of the funding sources somehow funds the housing authorities. So, housing authorities in those communities started getting letters saying that their funding is being cut by like ten percent or something. And that, people got nervous about that. I had reached out, we heard a little bit about this several months ago, saying the housing authorities might be affected by this. So, I communicated with Paula Mountain, who's the administrator at the, um, Wenham Housing Authority. And she didn't seem to think it was a problem for us. But we are in compliance. Wenham's in compliance right now. The next step in compliance is the end of January. We have to submit a form, another form to the state that indicates what, sort of an action plan. What are we going to do to try to address the MBTA communities' legislation? And what, what our regulations, what we're thinking about with our regulations. So, there's so many nuances to this legislation. It's difficult to understand. We, we did get a technical assistance grant, so that was, we got that. I think next week, they're gonna set us up with a technical, a consultant to help us with the next steps. So, Mass Housing Partnership has awarded this grant to everybody who applied. All communities are, who apply for it are getting help, essentially. So, it's hard for any one community to say, this is exactly what we're gonna do. Nobody knows what they're going to do yet. We all know that we're working on it, and the, the, the state's pushing this way, and we're kind of pushing this way. And I, I think it's all gonna come together. Wenham will eventually have to adopt a, some kind of an overlay district that allows for multifamily housing fibered. The size, the density, those things still have yet to be determined. And, and just so everybody knows, and I think most people do understand, it's not like forty B. There's no mandate that we have to create any housing at all.
It's just a district that allows it.
It's just we have to have a district. Like, like, we allow, in our business district, for people to build a certain type of, you know, commercial building. We went, we, so we have that on our books, right? That doesn't mean people are building it all the time, so.
Right.
Yeah, so, I, I, just so you know, we're in compliance.
So, the submission in January to keep us in compliance is basically gonna say we're working on a master plan and that's gonna include an overlay district, or what are we gonna say?
Well, it's the same. Yeah. Well, it's to let the state know, here's the situation in Wenham. Here's how much area we have near the MBTA station, what kind of community are we? We'll talk a little bit about what our zoning currently allows, and then we'll talk about whether we anticipate doing an overlay, whether we anticipate, you know, designating a specific spot in the community for, for this kind of development. But again, those things will all have to be determined, and we'll discuss this with you.
And will we discuss that at the next meeting?
Yeah, we want some technical assistance.
Drafted this for the next meeting?
So, you're saying the state still hasn't finalized what the area or the density is gonna be, and how many units and things like that? I think we need to know all of that before we-
Exactly. So, they, we're, we've been working with town council, or asking town council. They're absolutely saying nothing. Because the state's telling, telling them they're gonna sub, send out these workbooks. They were supposed to be out in November. The workbooks are going to give us some ability to do all those calculations, or the, you know, the, the, a reasonable size. You know, a reasonable area, the, you know, a density that makes sense. There's so many things to consider. Those workbooks haven't come out yet, so town council isn't, isn't touching it yet.
Is, is it possible that the workbooks won't be out before the letter is due?
I don't know. It's, it's-
And if so, would the letter simply say, we can't submit anything more detailed, 'cause we don't have the workbook yet?
I don't know for sure. That, that could be the case.
I wonder if we could have a conversation about a draft letter at our next meeting?
We will. Yeah, all right. I'll have it for the next meeting.
Yeah, that would be good.
So, can I flag an issue? I, I may have raised this at last month's meeting. I don't know if this is for the technical grant or town council, but it seems like we're in a unique position, MBTA-wise, that we have two towns that share a station, which means we're getting double-dosed on, on whatever this is, which we don't know yet, but when the numbers come out. So, I don't know what we need to do to push that question, but I think-
We did ask that question of the state, and they sent back and said, no, each community has to have their own number.
So, in other words, it's a circle, and we get half of it, and they get half of it?
Yep.
And do we need to do something?
No, I think it's a circle, and they do a full one, and we do a full one in the same circle.
But they cannot be zoning our property.
They can't what?
They can't rezone our property.
So, so, if, if you, if you had an MBTA station in the middle of, of, of your community, you would have, you know, essentially a mile, a half mile-
Right, around.
-around the whole thing. And you would have all of that area to disperse this housing.
Right.
We have only half of that.
Right.
And we have to disperse all of that housing in a smaller area.
And so does Hamilton.
So, it's not the same amount of housing, it's twice as much?
Yeah.
Yes.
That can't be right.
That's litigable.
That's what, that's what they're-
That's-
It's not twice as much. It's just, it's the same amount, but in a smaller area.
Half as much land. It's half as much land.
No, so it's twice as much.
The density becomes-
The density becomes twice as much.
But again, it's still only fifty acres. This half mile, this half mile radius is much more than fifty acres. We have to pick fifty acres within here to make our zone.
Right, but if we, the, my point is that if we weren't Hamilton Wenham, right, two towns, right?
Yes.
And we were the one town of whatever, pick your name.
Pick you.
It's, it's just going to be ones, one fifty acres and one set of total number, dense, whatever the unit number is. Whereas, we're gonna get both in the same half-mile radius.
I didn't, I didn't realize that.
You didn't realize that? Yeah.
I did not realize that.
Yes, yeah, it's kind of-
Just dawning on me right now.
But there are also other, there are other mitigating factors, too, like, the ground has to perk, since we don't have town sewer. It has to be able to get water. I mean, there are all kinds of other variables into how many units.
We probably don't have the water.
How many units that are gonna, so there'll be a lot that we could litigate or, or negotiate with, I think, as you go through this.
Absolutely. And, and, and it's also, it's not set in stone. It's not like there's, the, the first numbers that came out were seven hundred and fifty units. That's not the number that we're thinking anymore.
It's not recent enough.
It's certainly gonna be smaller for a community like Wenham. It's based, now, I think they're basing some of it on existing, um, housing stock.
Number of units, yes.
Yeah, which, you know.
What about, what about, does it have to be contiguous, the entire zone, or could you have two zones?
It, no, it does have to be contiguous, from what I understand. But that's also a question that we'll figure out.
And didn't somebody put up a graphic at one point? I mean, obviously, the train station is the no-brainer here, uh, but there is that bus stop down at the Shaws, or at the Stop and Shop?
Bus stops don't count. It's only train stations. There is the North Beverly Station.
There is a North Beverly train, train station.
But that is not within a half mile of the Wenham border. It's just, just shy of that.
This isn't our issue, but what do they, what do communities with multiple stations do?
I'm not sure, again.
But they also may have places like Somerville, Medford, they already have the housing stock that meets the requirements.
They do.
So, they're, they're focusing on exurbs like Beverly and Wenham and those places.
They are, and they already have zoning that allows for it, right?
Yeah.
Hamilton does, too. Hamilton's district over there is their business district or commercial. They allow for multifamily housing over there.
So, maybe that's why they haven't done anything, 'cause they're, they feel they're not in compliance?
They, they have to tweak it a bit and add more area, so, um, they're moving on that now.
Isn't, our area in Wenham, doesn't that include where the Wenham Housing Authority is now?
It does.
Uh, just, just shy of that. I think, I think some of that's included.
Yeah, it's-
I thought it was in the radius. It doesn't matter to them, but-
Yeah, I mean, I can find that, too.
So, one of the crazy things that may happen with the whole, um, building a new, uh, elementary school is redo Cutler and take down Winthrop, and that's where they build.
That's within half a mile.
But that's Hamilton.
That's Hamilton.
That's Hamilton, not-
So, this is approximately, approximately half mile. Where is the Weyland Village?
Yeah, that's the, right there.
Here it is, right here.
Yeah, that's it. So, it's definitely within.
But again, that's not-
I knew you were.
You're out.
That's not zoned.
You're out, 'cause that's-
For multifamily housing.
Oh, wow.
That's a different animal. David, where are you? Did that green line go right through your living room?
No, he's there. He's out.
Do you see all the wetlands that are involved, too, that aren't available?
Or ninety-one, or eighty-one?
Yeah, you see Foster Circle.
I mean, for, for reference, is, does anybody know how the, the horse farm is acre-wise?
Yeah, I'm ninety-one.
Okay.
I think it's twenty, I think it's twenty-eight acres, twenty-nine acres.
That's crazy, though. I mean, I realize it's not gonna be seven hundred and fifty, but if it were a thousand new housing units in that square, in that circle, and you're talking about like twenty-five, hundred to three thousand new people living in that space?
We don't have the water. We don't have the water.
Or the sewer.
We don't have the water. Well, you'd have to build some sort of package plant or something. I mean, you could do that.
What does that mean for, uh-
It escalates the cost of the project.
Pingree Park?
Well, Pingree Park can't be used. It's not, Pingree Park is not counted.
Okay, good.
And does zoning, doesn't, as we've discussed, have to be the entire area?
Oh, no, no, it's not a fee.
It's just a fifty-acre-
I think we're at fifty acres. We have to zone approximately a fifty-acre area.
Place within that.
So, the yellow grid lines, those are Wenham, that's Wenham?
Yes.
Okay.
Those, yeah, those are our lots, Carson, Carson's.
Right, so north of that is Hamilton.
So, do you access the, you're just above the wetlands. Are those accessed from Hamilton?
Just above the wetland.
These?
Yeah.
Walnut Road.
That's Walnut Road.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, some off of Walnut. So, some of it's Wenham, some of it's Hamilton.
So, some of these are Walnut Road, yeah.
Right, got it.
And then this is the, uh, this is the train station. This is an approximate half mile, um, bar, um, quarter or two, so. You know, the, my, honestly, my real concern is that people who have a couple of acres in this area may be approached by developers who say, you know, I can put twenty-eight units on your property and give you three times what you get if you just build a single-family home, or if you sold it as a single-family home. It, it, septic matters, but if you know the, did, has anyone seen the Willow Street project that was done in Hamilton? Have you seen it?
Willow Street.
Yeah, yeah.
Eighteen units, yeah.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Behind the, yeah, behind the Post Restaurant.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That has eighteen units, and a commercial on the bottom. That's in just, just over an acre.
And how are they managing the septic?
They, they got a septic system in there. There's some kind of technology that they got, septic system on the site, yeah.
How does, I, this is a term you all taught me. How does spot zoning work on this? Like-
Well, spot zoning is when somebody comes in and says, I wanna put in a blue cheese factory, please zone my property commercially, yeah, that's-
Just to zone my property. I mean, how does it?
This is an overlay, so you're basically saying, any of that designated area can be developed for multifamily as right.
And how's it, but it has to be buildable land?
You have to, you have to pick the area, too. You have to designate where it's gonna go.
It has to be buildable land?
I would think so.
So, I mean, if you just-
So, that wetland, in other words, might not work.
Right.
Yeah, they-
Do you get to count multifamily housing that's already built in that area as part of the-
There's no count. It's not a count. There, there is no count here. Like, when, if you got, if you created this district, and then you said, oh, look, we, we got seven hundred units, we're done. That's not necessarily the case.
That's not how it works.
You, you may get to two hundred units, and there's no more area that can really be developed. It's, or, or nobody wants to develop the rest of it. It, it's not really a count thing, so it, it's hard.
Right.
I think it's a little weird to understand it. It's like now, we have, our zoning says, you can build a single-family home if you have forty thousand square feet, a hundred and seventy feet of frontage.
Right.
You can build a single-family home on that property with no, with no, no approval.
Right, as right.
Just a, a building permit.
Right.
So, what we'll be saying from this is, if you have a lot that has certain frontage, and you can build a multifamily housing right, right, up to a certain density, and-
So, let me ask you a question.
It would direct that, it would direct that intensity of development into an area where it's appropriate, as opposed to-
Correct.
That's the goal of the outstanding.
In the hinterland, where every access is by car.
If you, let's say, I know it's outside of the green, but if you put it on a part, on a part of the land like this, with smaller lots, you're gonna get a lot of fifteen-unit buildings. If you put it here, you're gonna get a four hundred and twenty-five unit.
You're gonna get a cluster.
And so, you almost have to decide, like, what, what, what do you want? Do you wanna have a develop- Do you wanna have a development, or do you wanna have buildings?
Actually, I look at this as an opportunity to create a whole new downtown, and how to refocus and make more, um, this whole thing can be part of a master plan, so to speak, of redeveloping two or three large lots.
We should do one, Rick, we should do a master plan.
Right, there we go. Uh, because, some of the things we're hearing in the master plan, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, is that there really isn't a lot to do in this town. Um, and then this could be a mixed-use building, where it could have the units they need, it could have a platform for parking, to cover up the garage. It could look really good if we.
We can't finger a particular lot, but you can look on that.
Correct, and you'll see what's becoming available.
Where it is.
Correct, and this is a great opportunity, I think, in the long term, for the town to look more strategically at, uh, creating a full village town hall. Town area and, uh, going forward.
Growth and tax base and.
Right, but, doesn't that some half-circle that you've got up there include part of the very few commercial zoned area in town?
Our business zone.
Yeah, it could be redeveloped.
Very small, so right now, the, we call it the.
All of that could be.
Yeah.
A large portion of that is already.
Zone commercial.
Zoned for, well, business.
Business, right?
So they, they could do business development there.
Right, but, if it's turned into, if it's turned into this overlay district, that might take away the option to have business development.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the, the problem with the, the M B A communities pieces, it's just about housing.
Right.
Yeah.
If you had commercial development, you, you don't wanna allow commercial development without some special permits and site plan approval and a lot of oversight.
Right, you wouldn't be able to do the commercial part as right.
Yeah.
But you can still do it, right?
There's, there's been a lot of questions about that, how that's gonna look and people.
The overlay is for the housing, if you zoned the underlying land commercial and you did an overlay on the housing.
That, that sounds like it could work, yeah. Yeah, again, there's just so many questions about it and what it's really gonna look like, nobody can pinpoint it. The state has said that they're going to give, um, sample, they're, they're gonna come up with a sample by law that all the communities can kind of pull from, which they do in a lot of them, so.
Right, but maybe as part of the master planning process, folding this in and thinking about the kind of.
Yeah.
Because we do hear an awful lot that there's no commercial development, there's no place for commercial development, the tax basis, you know, the tax rate is too high, blah, blah, blah. This could, n- not the housing part, but the idea of something of a downtown development could be helpful, it seems like.
Yeah. Um, what I'll do, and, um, I'll be working with a technical consultant, hopefully, starting next week. They said they're gonna start to assign them next week. I'll send out to you what I know, and then you can send me back any questions you have.
Great.
Did you guys, who did? There's gonna be another stoplight, folks, there's gonna be another stoplight.
Let's, let's, let's just work on the stoplights.
Okay, all right, let's move along here, it's ten after eight.
Read the article?
Yes.
In, in the Globe?
I did, I did.
I thought, I found it ki- kinda humorous that Kingston said, you know what? We don't act, don't actually need that train stop anymore.
I worked on planning that train stop very beginning of my career, so.
Really? I think they literally said, uh, we don't need the train anymore.
Yeah, we don't really want that anymore, right.
We don't really, if you see how many cars are parked there every day, we don't need them probably.
Yeah. I took it today and it worked quite nicely, so I'm just gonna say that. Um, so I think we should move on though, 'cause meeting minutes, ten thirteen and eleven ten. Do you have them that you can throw up on the screen?
Uh, D N sent us, um, a revised set today.
There were like three punctuation edits in each one, that's it.
Thank you. Edits to it, just grab those.
'Cause maybe we can just go through that right here today and get it done, that would be great.
You guys are looking in my drawers with, um, all this mess I have in my file.
At least you know what it's about, that's important.
P B minutes, that's.
Okay, and, do, D P redline with that one?
D P redline.
His only, uh, edits were right here, I think this is comma, Dan?
Yep. Right there by systems.
Right here?
Systems comma.
Yeah, and then, um.
There you go, that's probably like removing an extra space.
Is that a space here?
Yep.
Yeah. So that's a space that will.
That might be it.
Catherine has these two, so she'll make these.
Oh, yeah, this one was.
Summary judge and motion, yeah.
And you, that, you got rid of the E too on judgment?
Yep.
'Cause we're not in London.
There's a typo in the second line of the first page.
First page?
Yeah, go back up to the top. Is it an E that's missing?
Yeah.
Seven P M in the.
The selectmen chambers.
That was the part I did not review.
And is it select board chambers now?
Yeah, that's, uh.
I think it's select board chambers now.
I don't think I was at this meeting.
What would you say in town hall?
Selectment chambers, I don't know if we call.
Just say in town hall, in town hall.
This is called the select board hearing room, whatever.
Okay, let's just.
That out.
I kinda like chambers.
Like chairs, I don't like all your chambers.
Chambers are for judges, we're not judges.
Not as judgmental.
You wanted to leave that?
Take the, the the out too.
Yeah, just say town hall.
Say in town hall.
In town hall, yeah.
You don't need the the. All right, can I?
I wasn't at this meeting.
You weren't at this meeting?
I wasn't at.
This is October, not November.
No, I wasn't there, this is the one, you were here, I wasn't.
This is October, you weren't here in November.
Okay.
I wasn't here in November.
The thing of it is, is.
Last meeting though.
That's November, this is October.
I know, I don't think I was at this meeting.
You don't think you were at this meeting? Wait, let me look at my notes.
Then maybe they confused me and you, and I was, I wasn't.
Look at the, pull up the November one and see if it shows, who it shows is not there.
I think you were there, Rick. I had, not present, R Woodland, so, I think.
No, I have, David, you were not at the, uh, October thirteenth.
So I was here.
Yeah.
You were here, okay, so that's incorrect.
So you need to take D Anderson off of present, A Weeks, D Anderson.
So David was not here. Where, where does she have that?
Down there.
They're right there.
Present, okay.
Yeah, D Anderson, and not present. Did, we do, I.
And Rick, you were here.
Correct.
Okay?
I wasn't here in September, right?
You weren't, right, you were here on the thirteenth of October though.
Yeah, because you were appointed to C P C that night.
Yes, you, you talked about it the month before, and I wasn't here, correct, that's correct.
Do it to you until you showed up.
I was here on the thirteenth, yes.
Okay. And I'll, I'll make sure we put.
And make sure you put Rick in present.
Okay, I'll put him right here.
Yeah, R Woodland.
She just does names, I'm, I'm sure.
How come Davis gets his full name spelled out and I only get an R? Hey, if we're gonna keep style the same, I'm just, sorry.
And you need a space in front of the R? That's very clear, I was.
Not present.
All right, I move to approve as edited.
Okay.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The record shows we all voted, yes, except for Mister Anderson, who abstains, 'cause he wasn't there.
And this is the October thirteenth, okay.
For all, you all had a grand party without me.
There was one of these party, one of these evenings, we had, we had chocolate.
Thirty-four total.
Yeah, did you miss?
Thirty-four total, there it is.
I was just talking about the number of trees. Not thirty-two, thirty-four.
Thirty-four, yeah, two, two, two each.
Two eaches.
Okay, let me get the next one. Wrong thing, sorry.
All right, now November.
Okay, this is the ten, eleven, ten draft, okay. Here's D, I mean, uh.
See, same fix at the top paragraph.
Oh, yeah, let's go up and check that. All right, present, Ian Weeks.
I have to pay attention to prehab.
All of these, can I just say that? D Anderson?
You also have the selectmen chambers, blah, blah, blah.
Oh, yeah, let's just say town hall. I think that's, just gets copied and pasted, so maybe.
Yeah, it does. So now we're looking at the November tenth meeting, okay, let me grab my notes.
Does A mean arrive?
At, probably.
At.
Ian, Dan, David.
Hardy.
We should make you do push-ups or something. I'd like the push-up idea myself.
David, I didn't put a note that you arrived.
I know, she, I, I love Catherine for doing that, that's great.
Um, okay, so that, those are correct, and then D N's other notation was here.
Apostrophe.
Apostrophe here, okay.
It's very clear that we told them that they needed to come back with an application to amend.
That's a space.
Yep, you added a space here. And again, here?
Those are just spaces being moved, yeah.
That was it?
Yep.
Mister Anderson noted he missed the last meeting. Asked for a brief update. All right, I will take a motion to approve the minutes as edited.
I saw moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstain.
Any other matters as may not have been?
Yes, there is one, and it came up last night at the, um, Open Space and Rec Committee. Which is making an application to, I think, the C P C, but also for other grant monies of various kinds. But anyways, part of the C P C application, there has to be some statement about whether or not the project will comply with the zoning ordinance. This is the West Wenham Park, the Higginson Park is now called, and it's in a residential district. And as I read the table of uses, any municipal use in a residential district requires a special permit from the zoning board of appeals.
Do you think it's, but there's already a municipal recreational use there.
There is, but it's a significant amendment, it's a lot great. Well, this is the question, the question is, what is required?
Yep.
The table of uses says a special permit is required for municipal uses without specifying whether that's recreational or, you know, a bus lot. You could see the difference between those two, particularly where there's already a recreational use there, so if they don't need a special permit, and there's something here that I'm missing, that's fine too, but we have to provide a letter.
Isn't there already a park there?
There is already, so it's an, it's a park upgrade, so what has to happen, do they have to approve the plan for that?
Are they expanding the footprint, or?
Uh, the land is the same, but the uses are going to change, and there's going to be parking. Additional parking, paved area and things like that.
Wha- but what's the change in use, it's still a park, right?
Grandly speaking, yes, it's still a park, but there's gonna be a new picnic area, and.
Football courts and.
It might be site plan approval.
That's, well, it says it requires a special permit, I'm just reading the table, I'm not going on anything else, I'm just, I'm just telling you what the table says, and part of it is, municipal use is not it could mean any, you know, a municipal use could be, as I said, a bus lot or a park. You know, a fire station or a school, or it could be a lot of different things, although I think school is educational, but, anyway. Um, it's a, it ha- it's marked B A, which means Board of Appeals per- permit, so if that's not necessary, if you're just modifying an existing use. E- either way, we need to have a letter saying what's required and that the intention of the town Open Space and Recreation Committee is to make sure that there's an approved. You know, all the approvals will be received, you know, we're gonna apply, we're gonna do whatever we have to do. So, but, it needs to, this application needs to be accompanied by some sort of statement about that.
I will, um, I'll talk to Kate on Monday and.
She was at the meeting last night, so she will know the whole thing.
So I'll have her request that, and I would say the best person to request it from is Rich Maloney, who's the zoning enforcement officer.
Right.
He does zoning determinations.
Right. But if his, if his statement is, yes, this requires a, um, a special permit, we're gonna need s- some sort of written something that says that, and then in the application the, um, Open Space and Rec Committee will say, our intention is to, you know, receive this approval before beginning construction.
I would think though, if you're not changing the use, and it's already existed.
That's fine, I'm, I'd be great, that would be great.
Yeah.
But I think we need to have that said somewhere, a piece of paper.
Right, so that's gotta be either zoning enforcement or somebody from the zoning board.
Exactly, it can't be us, because we don't have.
Determination.
It's a Z B A or it's Margaret.
Okay.
So, okay, that's what I had, so.
I said one other thing too.
Does anyone have anything else?
Oh, thank you.
Mister Woodland.
Woodland, that's okay.
Didn't I say that, Woodland?
Woodland, oh, I thought I said, never mind, um.
I don't get it wrong, 'cause my, I had a law school roommate who's last name was Woodland, so.
Really?
I'm not gonna get it wrong.
Maybe related, and there aren't many of us.
Yeah, maybe.
Um, I don't know if this is the right committee or what, but I've been kind of thinking about, um, how over time, we've had so much of this land, um, in town donated to whoever, Greenbelt or Autobond. And they have people who go around and look for those opportunities, um, for retire, like a, like a fundraiser does. Goes out and looks and makes, do we have anybody in town that's doing that on the town's behalf? Uh, to either look at large la- landowners to say, hey, you know, um, when you're done with this property, have you thought about?
Yes.
Blah, blah, blah.
So the Ocean's Open Space and Recreation Committee put together an open space plan a number of years ago that ranks those large properties that are chapter sixty-one, sixty, sixty-one, chapter land in order of sort of preference, priority. And we have been having periodic conversations with Greenbelt, which has an active rolodex of those folks, and we're having it back and forth, and in fact, part of the discussion last night was Kate Mallory is also starting to do that work. She's the staff to the Open Space and Recreation Committee, and she was talking to the board last night about who knew so-and-so 'cause they'd like to speak to the owner of such and such a property, so, yes, that is going on.
And that, and represent the town's interests in, once a master plan is made, um, then to be able to go out and say, well, gee, have you thought about this?
It's even more preliminary than that, because she was trying to make the connection between the reimbursed person and the owner. And the owner is, of this particular parcel is not living on the property, they're living elsewhere.
But we would do it in conjunction with an outside group that would help broker the.
Correct, and the other conversation we had last night is that she is also starting to think about what it would look like if we needed to act quickly. Where the financing might come from, how that should be structured.
Great. That's great, great.
So, she's on it.
Because I've been looking back at times in my twenty-five years here that we couldn't, it didn't have enough connections.
Exactly. Yes. And so, that's actively happening now.
Thank you.
But that doesn't mean we have the money, it just means that she's trying to chart a path. We did at one point, when we were putting the plan together, have folks from Ipswich come in and explain how they've done it, because they've been very good about partnering with various groups and preserving some important spots in Ipswich. And they have a, they have special bonding authority, I think, if I'm remembering correctly. But anyway, she's looking into what the options are.
And how we create this whole kind of benevolent organization that helps, yes, thank you. That's, that was my question, because I, I think as we look forward, as land's getting tight, and we need schools, and we need things, other things in town, how do we, how to bridge that divide?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I can bring the, we could talk about the open space plan at some point, show it to you.
Well, it'll be part of the master plan, I'm sure, so.
I hope so. We did so much work on that. But anyway, so that's it. Anybody got, got anything else?
I, I would love to see a copy of the open space plan.
Okay, maybe we could put it on the next agenda.
It's online. It's on the website.
Yeah.
Is it?
The Open Space Plan?
Oh, yeah.
It's under the Open Space.
It's online, it's on, it's online. We could put it on the agenda just to make sure that the board knows what's in it, take fifteen minutes on it.
It's right here at the, go to town government and go to.
We could ask somebody from the Open Space Committee to give us an update on it, yeah, get that.
It'd be me.
Go down to.
Oh, and we have now put on the video of the consultant we had for West Wenham Park, so you can see that too.
The Open Space and Recreation Plan?
Yeah.
Got it.
It's big, lots of pictures.
Yeah, it is kinda big. There's a lot of pictures. There's also the appendices, which is the ranking.
On the ARPA plan is a major league IT upgrade.
Yeah, that would be good. So, if you go down to the bottom.
I, I can.
Check it out.
I can check it out.
The thing you wanna look at, though, I think, is probably the appendices, and I think that's a separate document.
The appendices or the action plan?
Well, go, look down at the bottom.
Control and.
No, all the way to the bottom, like pull it all the way down.
That's appendix.
Which ones though are you thinking of?
Parcel ranking matrix instructions.
Possible ranking parcel ma, the parcel ranking matrix.
The parcel ranking matrix.
Two forty-seven, page two forty-seven.
Yeah, all the way to the bottom.
That's here though.
Yeah, because that was one hundred and thirty-six pages.
Right. That's why I'm saying, I think it's in a different document. And if you go all the way down to that, on the bottom of that. We did tons of outreach, we did a survey.
Yeah, this is all the information on the survey.
Blah, blah, blah. Go all the way down. We even asked people how they wanted to.
Just type in page one eleven?
Yeah, yeah, let me go back up.
Control and.
Which, um.
Uh, see where it says one of one sixty-eight? You should be able to type in, select it, and just type one eleven and keep going up.
Top center, up, black bar.
See, there's two of, all the way to the top, no, all the way to the top, okay, all the way, all the way off the document, okay, to the left.
Black bar.
Up here.
Now they're left.
Where's this number two?
See, two of one sixty-eight, put in one eleven of one sixty-eight. One, one, one. Boop, boop, boop. There you go.
Enter.
And then hit enter. That's submitted. Is this not it?
Should be a couple more pages. There you go.
There you go, parcel ranking matrix.
Instructions.
And it tells you how it goes, blah, blah, and then is the, is the matrix itself, itself here, I think? I hope.
You maybe didn't wanna list people's land, people.
No, I think it just tells you how it's done.
No, it's there.
But, um, that's an Excel spreadsheet.
There is, but I thought it was printed out. Maybe I'm wrong.
That's one here.
Okay, that works already.
But anyway, it tells us how to use it. If we wanted to use it, we know how to use it. And it does, it doesn't show, it, it's, those are.
This tells you, yeah, tells you how it works.
Is that?
That, those aren't the actual pars, no, those are not the parcels.
Those aren't the parcels. E I, E I O.
It wa, 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 what is that? Click on, just click on that, see what that is.
So, that would be great for.
Yeah, see, so we did have the facility inventory, but that's different.
For Joanne Frisella to get that.
Well, she should have it. I mean, it's online, so, well, we could direct her to it, for sure.
And.
Yeah.
On this iron rail, it's not the soccer fields.
What?
No, what's really valuable up there is if you go with the iron rail, you get the little scout barn.
Mm-hmm.
There's a road down there.
Yeah.
And then.
Goes up to the trash.
And there's like a bunch of acres of land.
Oh, I know, this is, this is, this is a facility inventory. So, what we did was, we said, what are the existing recreational and other facilities around town? And it, it talks about what they are. This is, yeah, this wasn't an attempt to figure out what to do with them.
Someday, there's gonna be a little piece of New England by, I'm sitting next to Iron Rail Cemetery.
So, anyway, there, but somewhere, I thought that, I thought the parcel ranking was available publicly, but maybe it's not.
It might not be, people's name.
But.
That's something for the committee to do, that's a tool.
Well, it's also something for the, it's, it's meant for the town to use, so it could be the planning board also.
And now Kate's gonna start working with that list, right? And then eventually, at some point, somebody will reach out to these folks and say, hey, I'm from the town of Wenham.
Correct. It's, it's more than eventually, it's already happening.
Don't wanna put words in your mouth.
Work, uh, reaching out to actual homeowners, property owners?
Property owners. Because Green Belt is doing that with a couple of them.
Green Belt does it.
And Kate is working with Green Belt.
Yeah, and we talk to them, yeah. I know what you're thinking, Rick.
Slightly different.
Yeah, a little different. The Open Space Committee has a, a certain objective, reaching out to people to preserve or open spaces. For the town to, I don't believe anyone from the town is going out actively talking to Mrs. Streeter, the Angelinis, you know, the Haley's, the people who own these big properties in town, and in getting, sitting down and having true conversation with them about what their plan is.
I think they are.
Which is part of their estate plan, which is part of their estate planning.
I think they are trying to, though.
Yeah.
And I think Green Belt is.
And I think it, yeah, it was the select board, I think members of the select board.
Because everybody knew everybody was.
Yeah, because people knew each other more, and they didn't feel awkward talking to someone about, you know, what they wanted to do.
Right, but if we need playing fields, and we need school buildings, and we need higher density housing, and we need cell towers, and, you know, there's a town need that too.
I think.
I'm talking to Steve Poulis about that. Trying to get that movement again.
No, it, it is moving.
It is moving, yeah. Well, that's because I wrote him an email.
The planning board's business, I believe, for this evening is done, so can I take a motion to adjourn?
I actually just have, just like a thirty-second request, which is the Gordon College, what's, just like what's happening, it's just on pause?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything more from them at all.
That was fifteen seconds.
That was great, so you saved me fifteen seconds. So, what about the guy that was doing the cannabis activity down by one twenty-eight in Beverly?
Yeah, he's, um, hasn't submitted an official application to Beverly yet. Beverly was doing preliminary, um, review of the plan. Once he submits for his special permit, we'll be contacted.
Because the access is in Wenham?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're still trying to figure out how that's all gonna work. Cannabis is not allowed in Wenham, but access to a.
Yeah, but, yeah, I thought roadway access might be.
No, and he's, he's not proposing that anymore, anyway.
It's not cannabis anymore?
No, 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 I'm sorry. No, his, his nu, most recent proposal is for a contractor's building, where he would lease out spaces for contractors, like, you know, electrician or whatever plumber who needs space to put their equipment in their vehicles. So, that's what he's talking about doing now.
Yeah, plant.
Nice.
Wow.
That's what we've seen through, um, Beverly. But Beverly will keep us in, you know, included, once he does officially apply.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
I will second it.
Until January twelfth, seven PM, town hall.
Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.